Order, call roll please.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Here.
Ms. Collins. Dr. McFadden.
Here.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting where the citizens of Mount Clemens Community School District can address the board with any questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address, be mindful you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. You may not receive a particular response to your inquiry this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Hi there. Julie Fruciano, 686 Wellington Crescent. So I don't any longer have children that attend Mount Clemens Public Schools, but I do have children that attend St. Mary's School. My son does receive speech therapy from Mount Clemens, but I do have some concerns about the therapy that he is and is not receiving. He started school back in August. He was just seen for the first time, I believe, a week or 10 days ago, so he's already lost valuable time. Last year, speech was sent to be virtual, which if you're familiar with like language arts and speech, it should be something that is done in person. I understand there's a teacher shortage. I understand that it's hard to get speech therapists, but my son is being robbed of the treatment that he needs. I have no issues with looking into getting a private speech therapist, but I don't really feel like I should have to. And the reason being is because this is something that is required to be provided to my son because he has a non-public IEP on file that he's had since he's one years old. This is also happens to be the district not only, this happens, Mount Clemens also happens to be where I live, so I have no other resources to go to besides this. I'm already paying a lofty, lofty fee in my taxes as well as a private school fee, and I don't feel like I should have to be paying for a private speech therapist in addition to what I'm already paying for. We received an email from our principal at St. Mary's asking us as parents to volunteer and come in and sit with our children during school hours while they are being seen by a speech therapist because they're required to have a helper. They do not have a helper. I don't know who is supposed to be providing that helper, if it's you guys or if it's us, but please do not ask me to volunteer to do that. I have no issues helping with my children, volunteering with whatever they need. However, during school hours, I have to work so that way I can pay to have these things for my children. So I really feel like we need to resolve the issue as to who is responsible for getting a helper to sit in with the children so they can get the adequate treatment that they need. If you cannot provide this, I will seek out private treatment, and you can let me know where you need me to send the bill to.
Thank you for your comments. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mrs. King. I do have two children that attend Mount Clemens School District, and we also live in the school district.
Address, please, ma'am.
59 Hollywood.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My concern is, and I understand I've been patient just as well as everybody else has been patient as well too, but my concern is about the staffing. Far as do we have adequate staff to help our children? The young lady just left, but I was in agreeance with her. I have a child that's in special needs, and at the moment, I have been trying, and his teacher has been trying to switch him over to regular ed, but somehow, we can't all get on the same path. My question is to the chair is, who is responsible for placing the proper adults in the proper places that they need to be so that our children can be educationally prepared for the next level? My son has capped out at 199 in his NWEA scores, and their cap is 200. So I'm trying to figure out who is responsible for monitoring our children to find out when their next level, or if they're tired or are exhausted of being in that environment. Because I feel like my son is exhausted with that environment that he is in. Yes, he did need that help, but he's exceeded that help. Now, what's the next step for him to move forward? I haven't got a phone call back from the principal. I've been up here numerous of times. I've also tried to contact the counselor. Haven't got a call back from her as well. So I'm just waiting, and I've been going through the proper channels, and I'm just trying to figure out how much longer can my son hold out before he starts acting out in other areas that will eventually affect his academics. And my next question is, I'm willing to help. I'm a preschool teacher. If there's anything that I can do on off-hours or hours after school, I'm willing to do that. I have been coming up here recently to all the board meetings, the parent-teacher meetings, and I've been meeting personally with Ms. Scott, and I know she's new as well. But my concern is that when I came to Ms. Scott to ask her about my child's academics, and it's not to throw you under the bus, but she's new as well. I keep hearing, "Everybody is new, everybody is new, everybody's new," but all of these problems are not new. And every time somebody says that they're new, it's just the problem just keeps getting swept under until somebody gets a handle on it. My son is in her specials class. She can tell he doesn't need to be in there any longer. And I've been waiting on the proper channels to get my son where he needs to be. He is in the 11th grade right now. Next year is his 12th grade year. I don't think he wants to spend his 12th grade year in specials, and it's no problem that he has been there and it's gotten him this far, but he has exceeded those expectations to where I think he can move forward. And it's holding him back because we don't have the adequate staff or adequate help to help my son to progress to the next level. So that's my concern is, how can we get this ball rolling? Everybody is introducing themselves and reintroducing themselves, but I would like to know as a concerned mother and as a concerned citizen of the community, when can we start to see these changes? And I've been so patient and listening to everybody, and we're gonna get there, we're gonna get there. But as a mother, I'm getting very frustrated because I feel like my son is lacking things that I know that is, if he goes to the next level, he might get. By him being in that same place, there's only so much curriculum that he can do in specials. Now, if he can venture off into another area, who would know what my son can actually be prepared to do in order to another level?
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
I have another one.
Your three minutes are up, ma'am.
Oh, I don't, I mean, is it anybody else?
Your three minutes are up, ma'am. You get three minutes, ma'am.
I know, sir. I just asked a question. Is it okay for you to, me to sit down and come back for three more minutes?
We'll consider, no, I can let you come back for another minute, but not for three more minutes.
Thank you. You didn't have to do that. I just said thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Agenda is still open for citizens' comments.
And nobody else has a comment, so, but then, can I come back?
One minute. You can come back for one minute, ma'am.
I don't, I don't like the tone. I would not. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, you're welcome. And what is your name?
My name is Earl Rickman.
Okay, thank you.
That's not, it's not hot.
No, thank you.
Last call, citizens' comments. Moving the agenda forward, next on the agenda, action item consent, item five on the consent agenda, five A, approval of minutes, one, September 26th to 2023 special meeting. Agenda item five A two, September 20th, 2023, a regular meeting. Consent agenda item B, five B, approval of bills for payment, one, September payments to vendors. Consent agenda item five C, new hires, one, middle school science, two, science, speech and language pathologist, three, first grade teacher, four, elementary art teacher, five, high school special education teacher. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda. Moved by member Collins.
Support.
Second by member Walker to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call roll please.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, the motion carries. Item six, human resources, A, 2324 administrators and non-administrators contract. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening. We'll turn that over to Mr. Lavender.
Thank you. This evening, the Mount Clemens Administration recommends the approval of administrative contracts for the 2324 school year for both Dea Bethel Seminole Academy Principal and Tina McNeely, Principal of the Mount Clemens Secondary Complex. The Mount Clemens Administration also recommends the approval of non-administrative contracts for the following. Marie Walls, Director of Pupil Accounting. Tom Hanna, Accountability Officer. Rebecca L., Executive Assistant to Superintendent. Kelly Metter, Accounts Payable, Title IX Coordinator and Edges Staff Coordinator. And Nick Alicia Holliday, Payroll and Grants Accountant. The Mount Clemens Administration recommends the approval of the administrator and non-administrator 2324 contracts as presented.
You've heard the recommendation of the board. Chair would entertain a motion relative to consent, I mean, to item six, human resources, A, 2324 administrators and non-administrators contracts as presented.
Some more.
Moved by member Walker.
Support.
Second, member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, item seven, curriculum, seven A, Kagan Professional Development, one, MISD Regional Assistance Grant. Mr. Superintendent.
And I will again turn this over to Mr. David Lavender.
During the 2223 school year, Mount Clemens professional staff participated in Kagan training, days one and two of cooperative learning. These two professional learning opportunities were followed by coaching sessions at each school. The teaching staff of Mount Clemens Community Schools overwhelmingly appreciated the cooperative learning structures the training provided. Surveys conducted through the 2223 school year from staff continue to highlight classroom management as a topic they would like support with. Kagan provides win-win discipline training as a complement to the cooperative learning training and coaching that has been previously provided. The cost of this training that we are planning for January and February of 2024 will cost $20,295. These funds have been approved to be covered by the Regional Assistance Grant. The Mount Clemens Community Schools Administration recommends that the Board of Education approve the funding of $20,295 from the Regional Assistance Grant for Kagan's win-win discipline professional learning opportunities for January 12th, 2024, and February 20th, 2024.
Is there a recommendation?
Is there a recommendation, sir?
Yep. The Mount Clemens Community Schools Administration recommends that the Board of Education approve the funding of $20,295 from the Regional Assistance Grant for Kagan's win-win discipline professional learning opportunities for January 12th, 2024, and February 20th, 2024.
You heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion relative to item seven, curriculum, A, Kagan Professional Development Grants.
Some more.
Moved by member Walker.
Support.
Second by member Collins. Are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
This is out of a grant, right? This is not out of our funds.
Correct. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries. Agenda item eight, business and finance, A, laptop purchase, A1, building substitutes. Mr. La, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Lavender.
I'll, I'll do this.
All right. Mrs. Dawes.
There is a need for laptops for substitute teachers and long-term subs while they're in the classroom. They'll, we're requesting to purchase 10 laptops that will be used daily, and they will stay in district but use for, in the classroom for instructional needs. And it is recommended that the board approve the 10 laptops as presented.
You've heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item eight, business and finance, purchase of laptop computers for building substitutes.
Some more.
Moved by member Walker.
Support.
Second, member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Where is the funding for those laptops? I know we talked about it last Thursday at this.
It will be general fund. It will be out of the technology budget.
Thank you.
And how many laptops? 10. Five at each building. Five at each building?
Any additional comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, item eight, excuse me, item nine, student expulsion hearing. Mr. Superintendent.
I believe we have this parent here? No parent. Is it closed session?
No requests for closed session.
No requests.
So I'll have Mrs. McNeely come up to share the incident and the recommendation for expulsion for our student.
So on the morning, you have a packet with the information. On the Monday of, morning of Monday, September 18th, the office staff at Seminole listened to a message on voicemail that had been left over the weekend, and the message stated that the caller was going to shoot up the school. Police were notified, school was placed on an internal lockdown pending investigation. Investigators were able to determine through caller ID that the student, number 7383, was a ninth grade student here at Mount Clemens High School. And the sheriff's department interviewed the student, and she admitted to making the threat. Now, the student was then taken into custody by the Macomb County Sheriff's Department. The student was new to our school, our district, last year. She enrolled in November, and in the seven months that she was here, she was suspended from school four different times for a total of 21 days for different things, including throwing a chair and hitting a teacher, threatening and harassment of other students, fighting and fighting the last day of school, which led to a suspension the beginning of the school year. So when this threat was made, she was on suspension and so had not been to school yet for the school year. Then she was placed in a youth home, so she has not been in the building this school year. Board policy 5772 states that students are prohibited from using a weapon or making a threat of using a weapon, and that the student is subject to disciplinary action up to and including expulsion. And Michigan School Code 380, excuse me, 380, talks about assault by a pupil against employee, volunteer, or someone in the school, and a verbal assault or a bomb threat or a threat of such nature is included in that. And the policy states that if a pupil enrolled in grade six or above makes a bomb threat or similar threat directed at a school building or other school property, then the school board or the designee of the school board on behalf of the school board shall suspend or expel the pupil from the school district for a period of time determined at the discretion of the board. My recommendation is that the student be expelled from the school by the board.
Did, when we made, attempted to make contact with parents or guardian, was there ever any response from anybody?
There was not. There were several calls, phone mail, phone calls, phone messages, emails, and there was no response from the parent.
So even when we sent the letter home, no, no response or no reply at all?
No response.
In the, in the past with the student's disruptive behavior, has there any been, when we contacted a parent or guardian, has there been any feedback or return calls from a parent or a guardian?
Very little. It's kind of, it was sometimes yes, sometimes no.
Is this a 180-day expulsion or is this a permanent expulsion?
It's board discretion. I, I recommend a permanent expulsion based upon the threat and the nature of the threat and previous discipline.
So it also says she transferred here last year. Is she an in-district student or is she?
That, I'm sorry, I don't know. I'm unaware.
And I'm pretty sure why she had that question is, did any disciplinary actions or anything in the past follow her before she enrolled into the district?
That I'm unaware of either. It would appear that she does have a Mount Clemens address.
So 13, was that ninth grade, eighth, ninth grade?
She, she's currently, would be a ninth grade student.
Did, do we know where she came from before she transferred in last year?
Out of state.
Out of state?
Mm-hmm.
And this is, this is one of those situations, because she's in district, we have no right to previous disciplinary record?
Correct.
That falls as a name even when they come out of state?
Correct.
With her previous history, was there any meeting with the counselor or any other?
There was, yes. Yes.
How did that go?
That, you know, I don't have, I'm not privy to a lot of details of that, but I know that those, that did occur.
So how, how are her grades? Because what's in here is just her attendance record. There's no grade record.
So she currently has no grades for this school year because she hasn't been in the building. She hasn't stepped foot in the building this year. Last year, her grades were hit or miss, so she had, she was kind of all over. Some As, some Bs, and then some failures.
Okay, so let me get this straight. So last year, at the end of the day, the last day of school, she got in the fight?
She did.
Which carried over to her being suspended for, how long?
It was five days.
Five days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So she was five days suspended, but she never showed up even after that was lifted?
Correct.
So do we know if she enrolled, is enrolled somewhere else, or she was just MIA?
We've received no record requests other than the request for her records for, while she was in the youth home. So it's just for that period of time while she's getting her education there.
And as she's going through this process, no one's going to enroll her?
Oh, no.
Until this is cleared up?
No, I'm saying before, you know, because she was on a five, she was on a suspension. Yeah, suspension.
So looking at this, is she now out of the youth home as of this week?
She is. To my knowledge, she is, yes.
And what is her, I mean, she charges, does she have court?
Yes.
What's like, what's?
Charges and court, yes.
So that's also pending?
That's pending, yes.
There's, there's been no like remediation for any of that?
No. Once she has a court date, they'll likely reach out because we would be listed as the, the, the party of the victim. Yes, thank you. So they would reach out to see if they were to consider some sort of a lesser charge, they would reach out to see if it was acceptable to the school. But they have not done that yet, so likely the court case is not soon.
I will tell you, the county's taking these cases very serious. I think initially, she was charged with a 20-year felony for terroristic threat to the school, so hope for the best for her. It would be a shame for a young lady, you know, at this age, but the county, and rightfully so, aren't really playing with these type of actions, so.
So I guess we need to decide if that's permanent or the 180 days.
Your recommendation, I heard your recommendation from the microphone being permanent.
Correct.
But then the written document doesn't state permanent.
Correct.
It says expulsion.
Yes, yeah.
But the recommendation, the administration's recommendation is permanent expulsion.
Yes, it is. I think there's a definite threat there.
Yes, understood. Heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the disposition of student 7383.
I move to support the recommendation, administration to expel student 7383 permanent.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve the recommendation of expulsion permanently for student 7383. Is there a second?
Support.
Dante.
I'll get, I'll get at the Miss Cahoon. Second by.
You gotta be quick with Dante.
Second by Miss Cahoon. Are there any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I won't make the comments since I made the motion.
Yes, sir.
I'm not real big on expelling students forever, but I told you, first thing I do first is protect the students. Safety first. And these threats are serious. If we don't take this serious, everybody will be doing the same thing. So I take safety very serious. So I wish the best for this young lady. I hope she gets the help that she needs, but we gotta put these students first.
And just, just to piggyback on Dr. McFadden's comments, it's one of the hardest things for, for me to do as a school board member is to expel a student because we know that they should be, should be in school, but with multiple infractions of disciplinary issues and the level of the disciplinary issues that this student has exhibited over the last 11 months, we have to take it serious, and we have to look out for the well-being and safety of the students and staff and other people that work in, work in our buildings. And again, it's, it's a hard decision for me to make, but when you look at the infractions, it's, it's, it's the right decision to make. Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Informational items. Agenda item 10, Business Committee, A, are there any questions regarding the contract listings? Item B, September Financial Report. Are there any questions regarding the September financial reports? Hearing or seeing none takes us to agenda item number 11. Superintendent's comments. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. Rickman, board, and stakeholders, community. Thanks for being here. I have a, I had to downsize my list of updates and just things I wanted to just bring to light or acknowledge, so I'll try to go fast.
so I'll try to go fast, so please bear with me. If you got any questions, just jump in there as always. I'll start off talking about a few things in academics. And as I said at our workshop last week, next board meeting, I'll do a update of our ninety, of my ninety-day entry plan and highlight some of the things that we are doing as we move forward. I'll start with academics. Just a few updates. Tutoring has begun at Seminole Academy. I believe it's, um, they're broken into ten-week sessions. They're taking, they're taking place at the building for grades kindergarten through five. We have also met with the library to entertain some opportunities for our students after school. They also provide some tutoring capabilities for our kids. We're still in the process of trying to work that out and see what we can do, if we can get our kids there after school, our elementary kids. They have some programming that's free, fully staffed, and so we're exploring those options as well as a, an extension opportunity, tutoring opportunity for some of our elementary kids who are, um, not, who are at or above grade level academically. So we talked about this last week. We, we tend to always focus on our lower achieving or performing students with a lot of the resources. And so David and I have been talking a lot about providing opportunities for our students who are where they supposed to be and some accelerated opportunities. So we're excited about that. Our GSRP program is underway at King, now at Seminole. It's a five-day program. I don't know if I highlighted that. I believe we changed from a four-day, traditionally it's been a four-day a week program, and now it's five-day. Met with the architects about the new playground that's coming to Seminole for the GSRP. We had to postpone, I guess, the process maybe by a couple of days. I wasn't crazy about where they were locating the playground, that they were gonna, it was gonna be right off the parking lot as people drove in. It was just from, it was too close to safety for me to have those babies that close off of the road. So they're moving it back, still in a great location right behind and next to the playground that currently exists. As I mentioned last week, I had a great meeting with the chancellor from Wayne County Community College. I have a meeting scheduled with the vice chancellor and the president to discuss dual enrollment opportunities for our kids, ninth through twelfth grade. One of the unique things I'm excited about, if we can make this happen, is that they are willing to send teachers to our kids. We know we have some dual enrollment opportunities with McComb County, but the challenge has been getting our kids there. And so I'll keep you updated as that, on the progress and process, as that process goes along. Climate and culture, um, we have, I'm excited about this. We talked about safety. One of the things, and I'll talk about this next month, month, one of the things, the first priority is always, um, safety and security for our staff, students, and our community. And, um, we're excited. We just sent four teachers throughout, from all, representing all buildings to Alice Training, the new active shooter training. And in Indiana, it was the closest one that we can get them to immediately because, in my opinion, we've been behind on the safety, um, the current safety practices, the modern safety practices, if you will. And so we have four teachers who went down to be trained and become train-to-trainer. They're gonna come back and be responsible for training the staff throughout our district. Um, I went through the training myself in my former district and it's very intense. We have a meeting set up to debrief and plan what that rollout looks like to begin to train our staff and then our students eventually. So we're really excited about getting where we need to be from a safety perspective as quickly as possible. Parent conversations with the superintendent meeting happened last month. We had about fifteen, ten to fifteen parents and community members. A lot of great conversation, just giving them some updates, introducing myself. There was a lot of, um, concerns lifted from parents as expected, different topics, some special ed concerns of, of things that have happened in the past. And so notes were taken and, um, attention has been given and will continue to be given to concerns as they're raised and lifted to me. But the meeting was pretty productive and I think it went really well. Scholarship fund, this is something you all have been asked about, and this is something we can probably dig into a little bit deeper at a later date, but I wanted to, um, bring this for Jen and I met with, um, our auditors from Yo and Yo. And I know Doc and Ms. Collins in our, our, our committee meeting, we were asking about those scholarship funds that exist. The, in, the, the recommendation from Yo and Yo, our auditors, is to explore a, um, a third-party organization doing that. I know we had some little discussion about that, but they highly recommend that and, and we look forward to having some further discussion about what that looks like. But we definitely want to, if the funds are there for our kids, we want to get them to our kids. So, um, be looking forward to that conversation as we move forward. Sports, football, volleyball wrapping up. Had a chance to attend a couple of events. Volleyball, basketball, I mean volleyball and football. Volleyball girls, the game I went to, uh, last, last week and this week, I heard they, they played really well, well too, but felt a little short. But our girls play hard. I was very proud of our, our, our girl volleyball players. They don't quit and they represented this community and this district well, so you should be proud. Football, I think our last game is scheduled for, home game, last regular season game is scheduled for tomorrow, away at Bishop Foley? Bishop Foley, is that right? At Bishop Foley?
It's tomorrow instead of Friday.
I thought today was Thursday. I was just hopeful. Friday, not tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Rickman. Strategic planning process, this is a, a, a big piece. We've been talking about that and, and even in my interview process, that's one of the things that we all agreed and talked about that we need to have as a district. I've been, uh, the survey has gone out, the first steps of our district, uh, strategic planning process has been a survey that has been emailed to the community and families. As of Monday, I want to say we may have had sixty-five responses. That's gonna stay open. We're gonna send out another reminder this week for the community to fill out the, the survey. We, we definitely want, when we're going into this thing, it's important to make sure we have, uh, a great representation of our community. So sixty-five surveys is a little scary for me. I mean, we have a, we're gonna leave it open until, I think, the fifteenth of November. We would just want to get as many people as possible to fill out that survey. The last thing we want to do is make district decisions, long-term decisions, with a minority representation of our community. So please, um, support that, recommend that, push that out to the community. It's on our website, it's on our app. If you have any other questions, feel free to contact our office. But that is very, I think, critical to, uh, the direction we're going in. Basketball is starting up for our boys and girls. JV, we're gonna have a JV team, fingers crossed, uh, this, this year as well. So we're excited about adding a JV team as well as a wrestling team down there. Dr. MacFadden, did you hear that?
I heard that.
We're looking for a coach. Is it posted, David? The position, the coaching position will be posted soon. So be looking forward to that. We're excited about adding some of those opportunities for our kids. Turkey giveaway. So this is still in the planning stages. I've talked to some community members and touched, contacted a few resources that I have. I know it's last minute, but I thought it'd be a great ideal, an opportunity for us to do a turkey giveaway. I would love to do whole meals, but because we are a little behind, uh, the eight bond with time, we wanna, I want to try to give away at least a thousand turkeys to the community on November twentieth from here at the school to whoever shows up and comes through, preferably it's our families and communities, um, first, but whoever shows up. So we're working on that. That's not a hundred percent locked in yet, but there are a lot of people trying to make it happen. We're, if we don't get a thousand, we'll give away something to our family. So I'll make sure I keep you all posted, um, on that. And if you have any resources, please don't hesitate to call my office right away. We talked about Washington in the past. The MISD is interested in using the gym for robotics, housing their robotics. So we've been in some discussion about, um, some type of lease agreement. It's for the IAM, right? Or I already messed, I already messed that up, David. IAM, it's for the, yeah, it's for the IAM. They just want to house, they want to use the gym for their field, practice field, and, uh, but they also want to pay us. And we're not turning down any money that we can use to, um, help our facilities out. So I'll get more information, you know, as that lease agreement or contract is, is developed and, and get it to you and make sure you're aware of what, what we're looking at. Also though, a part of that, my thinking is that, my hope is, um, and I talked to Mike Devault about getting them in there and then potentially looking at opportunities for our kids to be a part, whether it is some mentoring, some coaching opportunities our kids can be a part of, shadow, and just networking and collaborating with the, um, the county on that for our students and bringing some opportunities with robotics to them as well. So that's the, that's my big goal. Just a update, had a meeting with our, the regional vice president from our cleaning company. As you all know, I always talk about the standard of excellence and I'm gonna continue to seek that out. They walked through our facility from top to bottom to just observe. And we're having some discussions about, um, making sure our buildings are safer and cleaner for our students and our community. And so there will be some additional resources coming. They're putting together a plan to make sure that happens because our kids deserve the best. And so I'll keep you updated on that. Celebrations. Couple of, a couple of things I want to highlight. Our students had a chance, some of our high school students, sixth grade maybe, I forgot what grades went. Ms. McNilly, um, had a chance to visit the Anton Center for the art display. David, what grades were?
All of the culinary and dance classes.
Yep. High school and middle school. They took a walking field trip over to the Anton Center for a, I'm gonna tear up the, the title of the.
From Where I Sit.
From Where I Sit.
By the ICRJ.
Yeah.
I got you back.
All right, thank you. From Where I Sit, and, um, it was representing female, African-American females' contribution to McComb County community, and it was, it was phenomenal. We went as a, we took a field trip, a professional development day at Central Office. We went first and I was blown away and it was very impactful. Came back and, and one day we made a, a, a walking field trip for our students to just go have that experience and they walked over and, and we got a very high reviews from the center about our students' behavior and engagement. Very proud of our kids. E-WIMS. We were really excited about, uh, at the high school. E-WIMS is a grant that, that we are part of that focuses on early warning, indicators for dropout or truancy. And it's a grant that we have that allowed our whole high school staff.
Not the whole staff, a select of us that are on the E-WIMS team.
The E-WIMS team staff of free professional development all day. It was something else I'm leaving out.
And there's, um, twenty-four hours of coaching that will be provided.
Yes. Yep. So one of the things that, uh, E-WIMS focuses on is, again, those early warning indicators. And, um, as you all know, it's important that we identify those trends or those, those warning signs to identify our kids that are on the track to potentially not graduate. And, you know, it includes attendance, academics, and a number of other things. So you'll be hearing more about E-WIMS as we go along and we're excited about, um, that opportunity. Michigan State University attended and visited the high school yesterday and spoke to our kids about, um, the opportunities to attend Michigan State, enrollment, the possibilities. So it was great exposure for our kids. We, um, are looking at doing more through our counseling department and our, um, principal's office to get our kids exposed to that college or career or as much exposure as they, we can possibly get them to, to all angles or lanes that, um, you know, we just, we're preparing kids for careers that we don't even know exist yet. And that's something I think is important for us not to ever close a box or, um, put our kids in a box or send them one way. And, and that is something that I'm passionate about, making sure we do is have an open mind and, and create opportunities for our kids to find their way, not necessarily our way, but find their way, so. And Oakland is coming next week. And, and, and we're gonna get in trouble over here. Our recent graduate, uh,
Oh, great.
And I'll be calling Grand Valley and Wayne State as well, so. Please call, contact your local colleges and we need them in here as well. We just tell them Michigan State came already. Where were you? We also had a visit from, you want to talk about this real fast? Ms. McNilly, the, the therapy dog that came through? What's that company's name?
Um, it's Zebra K-9.
Zebra K-9. They came through for two days and brought their, uh, therapy dog, walked through the building, and, uh, we have some pictures I'll share at a later date. Our kids were able to, um, there's a lot of research that supports the impact of therapy dogs on students, social, emotional. Um, and so it was pretty cool to see our kids engaging, uh, with the, the dog. And, uh, we have some pictures and it was really powerful, um, exposure again and opportunity for our kids, so. Didn't distract, I was worried about the distraction, you know? Everybody's not a, a dog fan, but it was, it were, actually you wouldn't even know they were here, um, so.
And they were asking for the second, before the second day?
Are they coming back? Are they coming back? Yeah. Operation School Bill, this event, and we have some pictures from that too. We'll get them out on the, on the website, um, at Seminole. We had over four hundred kids receive coats, hats, clothing, gloves, mittens, toiletries. It was one of the most impactful, um, I mean, it was Christmas for our kids. I was, I was moved. I got a chance to shop with a, a young lady. I guess it's okay. I don't know if, her name was Love. She's a student at the elementary school and I was able to be her shopper. And we went around and she shopped and it was, it was the most inspiring, one of the most inspiring experiences, um, that our kids could have if you could have felt the energy in there. And so every kid left there with a bag full of those things, brand new. I met the director, took pictures, and, and that was just a great opportunity for our kids. And, and it's those things that are, that are, that are gonna have a huge impact, not on the academics, but also developing the whole child. So, um, shout out to the Seminole team for making that happen. It was like really coordinated to get every kid in that building down in the gym, this class, that, you know, that group, and, and back to class. Usually getting them there is one thing, but getting them back all, all together is a whole nother monster, so. They did a great job, so we appreciate that opportunity from Operation School Bill. Uh, Seminole also conducted a parent involvement meeting that I attended and had an excellent turnout. As you all may or may not know, there's, a lot of the research shows that there are very few high-performing schools that have, uh, minimum parent involvement. And so, uh, actually we had a, a meeting today with the principals and, uh, that is one of the, both principals' goals is to develop a PTC, LSEO, whatever the name we're gonna call it, a, a parent group. But, uh, Seminole had a, a parent meeting and I think it was attended by over twenty parents. It may not sound like a lot for the number of kids in the school, but that's a lot, um, for, um, for our community. And, uh, we continue to, you know, hopefully continue to grow that and, and have our parents' voice heard and being involved, um, a little more proactively as we move forward, so. The biggest celebration, and, and I don't really, I'm, I'm working on celebrations, the staff and the district. No, I don't, I'm not a, we just try to get things done, so I don't take the time a lot of times to stop and celebrate. But there's a huge celebration that I'm, I'm proud of the team for. It's still a little preliminary, but this, um, for the last, since two thousand and eleven, I believe, our enrollment has declined every year. And some years it's been worse than others. Some years it has been better, not as worse, if that makes any sense, but it has been declining. Preliminary, prelim, preliminarily, right now, um, we have, we have stopped that bleed. And, um, it looks like from a head count perspective, we not only, last year we had seven hundred and fifty-four students during fall count, and right now we're at seven eighty-one. So I want to give a big round of applause. So we're very, very proud. I gotta do something for the team. It's been a lot of work. We just work. And, uh, and I, again, everybody has been a part of this from, from the board, you know, allowing us to do marketing strategies and, and, and we're not done, right? But we need every victory we can get because the negative only gets the, the attention. And so we gotta do a better job of telling our story. Got a meeting with, with Patrick coming up here soon to start to, to produce some things out from our kids, media-wise. Um, there's a lot, I was at a meeting yesterday with, um, with MDE and, uh, we really have a, despite what some people want to say, we got a lot to be proud of. And our kids are resilient, this community's resilient, we will be resilient. And, um, this is a first step, I think, for us. Um, and, and I'm excited. I'm happy for us for that. I'm just gonna end on that note. How about that?
Got a question, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
About twenty minutes ago in your presentation, you mentioned,
I learned from the best.
You mentioned, um, basketball JV. Uh, is that both boys and girls or?
I know it's boys for sure. I'm not positive, I'm not positive about girls. I don't think it's girls. I will. will, I'm not 100% positive, but I know it's boys for sure.
So we feel we have enough interest to field both teams-
Yes.
Because last year we had a problem fielding a basketball team, period.
Yeah, I heard that. Yeah, as of right now, there's about two teams.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions to the superintendent? Going, moving the agenda forward, before we go into board comments, I would like to, the board talked about, at the workshop last week, I talked about looking at your calendars and try to see what your calendars accommodate so we can have a board superintendent goal-setting workshop. This is, we're at October 18th today. Soon, the way I look at it, sooner or better, because as we get deeper into November, you run into Thanksgiving, and then Thanksgiving you, you know, get into that, you know, that period of holiday festivities and busy doing things because of the upcoming December holidays. So just wanted to have a discussion and potentially come out with a date that we can get a consensus on to have the superintendent board goal-setting workshop.
I forgot to add something.
Yes, sir.
Can we potentially look at two dates? The board wanted a presentation from Plant Moran. We talked about last week, so we might need to have a special meeting for their presentation, if you recall, if that's what you want to do. I don't know if, I know we want the first things first.
I would like to have the goal-setting session first.
Okay.
Because we are, here we are in October and-
I don't know what to do.
We haven't, we haven't, no, we haven't. You know what to do.
No, no.
We haven't established any measurable goals to be fair to you about when it comes to evaluation. So let's throw out some dates and times and see what sticks.
You looking for a Saturday or you looking for a evening?
Saturday, you know, would be, I think would be better. That's just my perspective.
November 4th.
Sounds good to me.
I got, hey, I got one support.
I can do the 4th. I can.
We do the 4th?
Well, what time?
We've been working around you now. What time you need?
Ideally, I'd like to do earlier.
We usually, usually in the past, when we did these retreats, we started early.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. And we try to get as much in as possible during the day.
Yeah, that's perfect.
So what time do you need to leave?
I don't, I don't have anything, but if I did, it would be later in the afternoon.
I think we might be good. We're going on this. And if you need to leave, we understand too.
Okay.
So, everybody okay with November 4th? I will make it a formal motion, Mr. President. I'm moving on November 4th to be the date that we set for our, this is what we call a strategic meeting.
That's board superintendent goal-setting.
Board superintendent goal-setting. Uh, we need date, time, location?
Want to do the ISD? Yeah, nine o'clock?
Let's try the ISD. That's where we get it offsite. Focus. Nine o'clock in the AM at the ISD on Garfield Road.
Moved by Dr. McFadden-
Support.
-to have the board superintendent goal-setting work session Saturday, November the 4th, 9:00 PM at the ISD. I've heard Ms. Kahoon, you're supporting that?
Yeah.
Second by Member Kahoon. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
I know we're gonna be talking about some of the details of it, but I just want to put the baseline as location and time to start. Then we can put the fluff and bluff in it as we figure that out.
Oh, that was part of your motion?
Yes, it was. The fluff and bluff.
The 4th, at 9:00 at the ISD.
That's the one. That's all I need to know. Until forever.
Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? I want the 28th, but I'll go 4th. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12, board comments. Member Kahoon.
First off, I want to acknowledge the faculty here. With the amount of stuff that I just heard, that takes a lot of work from everyone. And I applaud everyone. I know that it's just a lot of work, along with making sure the kids are taken care of every single day. And I just applaud the work that's being done. And then seeing that increase in enrollment is astonishing to me, after seeing the report that you showed us at the finance meeting. So I am very happy to see that. I hope it's the trend that stays in the right direction. And I have no doubt that it won't, you know, that it'll go backwards. I'm confident that it will continue to go forward, that the faculty is doing a great job, you know, by bringing in the Operation School Bell and the therapy dogs and walking over to the Art Center. Like, those are things that really bring memories to kids, right? They talk about them for years to come. So I applaud each and every one of the faculty here. I wanted to address the public comments that were made today. I know that both women left. And from a public comment standpoint, if you're gonna make a public comment here, please stay enough that we can talk afterwards. Not that we're gonna have a resolution, but at least to find out more information. To just come to the board and drop comments in, and then leave does absolutely nothing to really investigate and find out what's going on. Secondly, I would also maybe contact the superintendent or the principal, but probably the superintendent. But what I will say is I have a special needs child and what I would say is to put in writing via email a recommendation for services. And so that would be done, I believe, to the teacher and then the teacher has to follow up. If that doesn't occur, then go to the next level, which I believe is a principal, and then the next level after that is the superintendent, and then go to the MISD after that. If you feel that your child needs to get a new IEP or the evaluation redone, follow those same steps. That's what I had to do. And if you need, if you don't feel that you're getting the adequate amount of responses, then go to Macomb Arc and get a parent advocate. A parent advocate is somebody who goes to IEP meetings with you and represents you, and they know exactly what IEPs are about, and make sure that you are represented. Because as a parent, you should be, you should make sure that what needs to happen for your child with an IEP happens. And that's so vitally important. So I would recommend to, just from a parent to parent, that they contact the, again, going through the chain of command, ask the teacher in writing via email on evaluation for their IEP. And then if they don't get a response, go to the principal. If they don't get a response, go to the superintendent, and then go to the MISD for the reevaluation. As far as speech therapy goes with the St. Mary, I don't know anything about that. I would also recommend that that parent maybe contact MISD, because I believe the services come from MISD. They don't come from the actual school district, meaning they don't come from people within the school. They come through the Macomb Intermediate School District, I believe. And then the survey, I would just ask those that, you know, watch the videos here, that if they want to be part of the change in this district, they have to be engaged by doing these surveys. They have to be engaged by coming to board meetings and be engaged by talking to board members and be engaged by doing things in the community. And if you really want to make a change, you know, let's come and have conversations and possibly, you know, put together, you know, even in the community, you know, some work groups that we can make changes in the community and build the community up. I'm looking forward to the video area in the Mount Clemens Schools being used violently for the promotion and the great promotion of what's happening in the district. And I implore that each of us in the community, as well as on the board, continually promote what is being done through the district, hoping that we can start really having a lot more Facebook posts and Instagram posts and things like that that show great things and that we can share those. Because that's how we're gonna change the view of what's happening at the school, right? So, and then on the E-Whims, are we gonna get any report on that? Like, you know, with what's being done? How is that having an effect? And things like that. And then same thing with the Alice training, you know, how did that go? And really getting an update from that. And then the last thing I would ask is, just from a principal's standpoint, because I know we had discussed personally, having, you know, principals be here to, you know, kind of give a report on things that are happening at the school. I think that if they can do that at these type of meetings, then that's another avenue that we can share that think good things are happening at each of the schools.
They'll be to that point. I'm gonna have them do a report out quarterly, so they'll be here next board meeting.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Kahoon. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Glad to hear that our principals will be doing a quarterly report. It's great to hear give to people reports on what are happening at our schools. Glad to hear about the potential of the dual enrollment, as a former dual enrollment student. Also glad to hear about the Alice training and getting our teachers the new training on new standards. Looking forward to the update on the scholarship fund and how that goes as, we know, many of our students need scholarship funding for after high school. Glad to hear about the enrollment. It's promising. And we can only just go up from here, because we have a lot of great work that's being done by everyone on the team, top down, bottom out. Just looking forward to our strategic planning, as we all agreed that we needed one when we did our superintendent interviews. And just looking forward to that. And to the public, we're gonna need involvement with that. So if anyone wants to volunteer, you know who the superintendent is, man, you can contact them. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Collins?
I just want to say this year, I think we're off to a great start. I think there's some misinformation out there. So I just ask the community that if you have questions regarding anything that's happening here, please talk to us. Facebook isn't the right place to get an answer. We all have our emails out there for you to communicate and we welcome the communication. We want to provide transparency, but we want to do that in the appropriate format as well. I do want to correct just one thing in your comment, not necessarily because you said, I just want to make sure the right information is out there. The district itself is responsible for speech pathology at St. Mary's. The ISD does not have anything to do with that. So we are addressing it. It's a tough spot to be in with a position that's hard to fill. Across the state, it's hard to fill. It's not just a Mount Clemens issue.
But the therapies here are done for MISD, right?
Not speech pathology.
Okay.
Yep.
But PT, PTOG, no?
Nope.
No?
That's our-
It's in-house.
That's our PT, right?
Yep.
At long screws, they weren't done.
Yeah.
And if I heard-
And I thought that's what they worked about the whole-
If I heard the mom correctly, our speech path started last week. So she's getting the services now. They were just behind because we couldn't find anybody.
Thanks for correcting.
Yeah. Other than that, I want to say homecoming was great. Mrs. Joseph did another phenomenal job this year. She works very, very hard on homecoming. We definitely could always use more help in that area. So when people ask what they can do, come fill out a volunteer form and I'm sure we have something you can help with because we need it. Again, I'm looking forward to all the great things that are happening, the increase in enrollment. That's gonna continue. And I think when the strategic plan comes out, you're gonna see some really great things for this district to come in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Dr. McFadden?
Thank you, sir. Well, first thing is, I'm gonna chime in for both these ladies. The speech and language pathologist started last week.
Correct.
And I'm saying this because I know the mother that was here is a St. Mary's mother. She's really not in our district. She might never come back to our meetings. I hope she is listening to this right now. The speech pathologist started last week. Also, if she feels like there's information she needs, she can also go to our diocese at St. Mary's and follow that chain of command also. They will touch base with us. We have two sets of meetings with a lot of information. I know this meeting here that you see online, you probably say, well, they touched this, they touched that. Our first meeting, we go in detail in a lot of this information that we gave out tonight. So those who want more information, just show up to the meeting. It's posted, it's twice a month. This is the second meeting. All hands on deck. When I say all hands on deck, I hope that's collaboration and strength in building relationships with our city officials, with our county officials, and everybody in the community. Because, you know, we are a team. We believe in building and gaining strength, and that's what we need to do. It's easy to give construction criticism, but it's always better when you don't have destructive criticism without the recommended solution. And that's why I'm talking about a few different things. Engagement and ownership. The things that took place, Mr. Superintendent, that you passed on is pretty great celebrations. The E-Whims, I know I've been on top of your head about that, and thank you very much, because that's something I wanted to see take place. It's good to hear about our students walking over to the Anton Arc Center, especially our culinary class. That is a big deal. I mean, I'm really big on culinary. My son loves to cook. And I know this can be frustrating for a lot of parents, especially when it comes to IEP guidelines. But the most important thing about that is the parents' involvement. Because a lot of these students, they have little issues and troubles because of lack of involvement. And I know that a lot of parents work. They got a lot of different things on the side. If you need to reach out to somebody to help out with that, please do. Talk to the teacher, email them. Do what you have to do. Because that involvement is so important when it comes to a child's upbringing. None of the, I'm gonna leave this alone because I have too many comments. I'm gonna just leave it back to myself. I'm gonna end those comments there. Mr. President, thank you much.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I'm very encouraged and it's very encouraging to hear the report on the number of warm bodies that we had on Count Day, that we not only exceeded our budget, but it appears as though we have a greater number of students in bodies and seats at Count Day than we had last year. And we had projected the budget based on a much lower number, maybe 70 students less.
654.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we built the budget on 654 and currently we have 781. That's very encouraging. That's a tremendous effort by all parties involved. And kudos to everyone on the team and the community, all the stakeholders that were responsible for these numbers. And we can, hopefully, we're heading in the, we've stopped the bleeding. Hopefully, we've stopped the bleeding. We no longer have any mass exodus of students. And we either stabilize or we continue to increase and grow our student population. I'd like to say, good luck to the Lady Bathers. They fought hard thus far this year in their season and good luck as their season winds down and they get ready to go into the district tournament playoffs. Kudos to the Battling Bathers for their efforts on the gridiron. They started out slow, playing out of division, larger schools, and we took it on the chin, three games in- and uh, we took it on the chin, three, three, three games in a row. Uh, when, then when we started playing uh, teams that are in our conference, in our division, same-sized teams, uh, we, we, we've done better than holding our own. Uh, we, we were the champions of the division last year and my last recall of the, we're currently second place uh, in, in that division. Uh, hopefully uh, the la- the last game of the season, we're, we're victorious and hopefully our record uh, is good enough uh, to put us in the playoffs a- again this year. But on, on that note, I do have concerns. Uh, we have a nine-game schedule and we only had two games at home at the Clem. That's troubling to me. Minimally, we should have at least half of our games uh, home. We had nine games, two games at home. Uh, that, that needs to be corrected. And uh, put a su- uh, in, in your updates, uh, Mr. Superintendent, uh, can you provide an update on the who's remaining on, on lease um, at Washington? Cause I remember this board uh, passed uh, a resolution that September thirty-first was the end of the leasing date. Um, and we are October the eighteenth. Uh, like this uh, find update on if there's anybody uh, still in that building and, and what's the situation we're doing about it? And also if we can look in providing some kind of extracurricular activities or some sports uh, for the middle school. Um, you, you know, talked about the expansion of the JV basketball team for the boys, that, that's great. Uh, hope that we have enough numbers uh, to facilitate that. Hope, hopefully that we have uh, a number, enough number of girls wanting to play uh, basketball that we can field a varsity team and a JV team. But um, we, if there, if, if there's any way possible that we start looking at providing some of those extracurricular, curricular activities and sports uh, for our middle school, uh, that gives us some type of feeder program and it, and it gives those students some kind of uh, something to look forward to um, other than just going to school. Cause I, I know that's a, a young age and a very impressionable age. Um, an age where kids start, you know, developing their interests uh, in particular things. If we could offer some type of uh, uh, sports or activities that, uh, I'm not saying football, cause football is the most expensive uh, sport out there, but you know, something like maybe wrestling, uh, basketball, uh, track or something like that, those, those activities. The biggest cost with those are generally the coaches. Uh, but I, I think that would um, boost the morale of those middle school students and uh, to provide some kind of extracurricular activities uh, for them.
Can I respond to something?
Yes, sir.
So, just a FYI, we've talked about the football games at home and I've been doing some research to understand that myself. Um, and then talking to our AD and Coach Garland, what, and not that this is okay, but trying to understand that. It's really disrespectful, but it is what it is for now until things change. But teams, the, because they play a point system, so the wins and equality games that you play earn you points to make it to the playoffs so you can win. Because they're on this point system, uh, and Coach Garland tries to play some tougher teams, bigger schools, that'll get us more points so we can be in the playoffs and, 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 you know, and, and be in a better position. Those schools are like, you gotta come to us. And yeah, so it doesn't make it okay, but I understand the mindset behind it and as we move and grow, we're trying to figure out a way to um, change that narrative and we could keep developing as a program and, and keep winning and do what we have to do, then we'll be able to say, you gotta come to us. But not an excuse, but I, I did get some understanding of that because I was, I felt like you, like the, we got this beautiful facility, we, you know, um, can capitalize on that, our kids can be at home and, and our football game turnout is unbelievable um, for our, our community. So I did get that information and um, I do believe, what did we, middle school sports?
So last spring, we implemented track.
Yes.
And right now we have middle school basketball coaching posted and I just posted the wrestling coaching position and that's six or twelve straight. So we will have all three that you mentioned, Mr. Rickman.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification on, on those issues. Um, those are my comments. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Member Walker. Second, Member Collins. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker? Ms. Collins? Ms. Cahoon? Dr. McFadden? Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting adjourned at seven forty-six in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.